All right, here we go. Back at it again. Another day of me working on the proofing for the Rust on the Allegheny audiobook, and you getting to follow along with me if you so choose. Uh, I'm gonna continue to put up these videos. Not a lot of people are watching, but I was surprised by the fact that anyone was. Uh, a few people have, have, uh, watched these and said, "Hey, this is kinda cool to be able to kind of see your work and be right there alongside you as you do some of this proofing work." Like, they were interested to see how the process works, and they were kind of interested to see, uh, just what my typical day is like outside of the writing aspect of it, because there's so many other tasks that I have to do in order to make these books a reality. So, it's been kind of fun to have an excuse to record myself and share this little part of the process with some people. And so, I'm gonna get back into it here. Today, we are, uh, just as a little introduction, in case you didn't watch the previous videos, what I'm doing is going through the audiobook files that were submitted to me by the narrator who I hired to do the, uh, audiobook for my historical fiction novel Rust on the Allegheny. So, what I have to do is go through the files and listen to them alongside reviewing the PDF of the paperback, uh, to just make sure that everything lines up. If there's any small mistakes or any little things that aren't quite right, uh, or just lines that I think, "I'd like him to record that one again," uh, then this is my chance to do it. And then after I go through all of the chapters, then I approve the final production and then it's able to be put out there as an audiobook. Uh, it's gonna be on Audible, and I think I'll be able to put this one on Spotify and possibly also YouTube. I was thinking about just putting it up as a YouTube video, or a couple of YouTube videos, just kind of for free, uh, for people to check it out if they want to. So, right now, we're getting into chapter eighteen. Uh, so, without further ado, let's get into it.
Chapter eighteen, Leightonia City, Pennsylvania.
Right off the bat, we might have one.
Chapter eighteen, Leighton- Chapter eighteen, Leighton-
I had to listen to that a few times to make sure that I was even correct. So, it sounds like, uh, maybe he recorded that twice and then it got, um, like overlapped a little bit, because it's definitely him saying eighteen twice. Or it could be that, uh, when he was doing edits, it got chopped up a little bit, and so like the eighteen sounds stuttery. I'm just gonna make a note. Chapter eighteen. Set the two-second mark. I guess I never really gave an introduction, but if you've seen any of my previous videos, you already know, but I'll go ahead and say it. My name is Corey McCullough. I'm an author, and I've written, uh, some fantasy novels. Uh, I got a series of three books that is gonna be either four or five books. It was supposed to be four, but, uh, now it's so long that I'm pretty sure I'm gonna have to split the last one into two. Anyway, I also wrote a science fiction novel, and, uh, this one, uh, the one we're working on now is a historical fiction novel that it's a major departure from anything I had written before, but this is what has gotten, uh, out of everything I've written, this has gotten the most positive response, and s- you know, frankly, it has sold the most out of anything that I've written. And the audiobook for this is, you know, it's a long time coming. This should have been out, uh, this book came out a couple of years ago. And really, I should have had the audiobook ready when the full book came out, but, uh, you know, it happens. It took me a while to, to get on this, and so finally, I've got the audiobook and I'm just reviewing it before I put it out in the world.
Leightonia City, Pennsylvania, July nineteen thirty-nine. "Maybe he couldn't get away," said Dick. "Maybe Poppy wouldn't let him." A few quiet seconds passed. "We did say 'right here,' didn't we?" said Dick. Another few seconds. "We said 'right here,' right? Didn't we?" "Yes, okay, yes," said Nat. "We said 'right here,' and yes, he is late. What do you want me to do about it?" "I don't know," Dick snapped back. "Sorry, okay?" Nat chewed on his lip thoughtfully, looking up East First Street and then down.
It should probably be noted, if you don't know this, uh, these are ten-year-olds. These characters are, are ten-year-old kids, so, uh, that's why he's talking in the inflection that he is, uh, speaking in. So, the character voices are pretty appropriate for, for, uh, ten-year-old kids, I think. Because this story, uh, the book jumps back and forth in perspective between, uh, a main character in the present day who's an adult, and then it goes back to his grandfather as a ten-year-old in the nineteen thirties. And then also, we jump to, uh, the main character's father as a nineteen-year-old college student in the nineteen eighties.
For what felt like the hundredth time, a passerby lugging shopping bags forced him and Dick to retreat a bit further back on the sidewalk. They now had their bags flat against the stone of the Saint Stephen's Cathedral, which stood like an impenetrable medieval bastion amid the city's shoulder-to-shoulder shop buildings and tenements. Nat had only been in downtown Leightonia at night a few times before, and those times had been with his parents. It was almost eight now, and the sun had just dipped below the buildings across the road on Central Avenue. Before long, it would be night, well and truly night, and Nat was out on his own. Such a thing had never happened before. As he and Dick stood on the corner of East First Street and Warren Street, one block from the Derrick, he found himself surprised by how lit up the streets already were. Not a single storefront was dark. There were people everywhere, with sidewalks so choked that on his way here, he'd have difficulty navigating through the throng at the center of town. There were people everywhere, with sidewalks so choked that on his way here, he'd have difficulty navigating through the throng at the center of town.
I'm gonna make a note of that one, because I'm not sure if it's a mistake, but it, it sounds like the narrator said he'd have difficulty navigating, instead of what it's supposed to say, which is he'd had difficulty navigating. Just a small, little, and again, it might not even be a mistake. That could be what he said, but if there's any sort of, if, if someone's listening and, and they can't tell the difference, if I can't tell the difference, then a reader might not be able to tell the difference, so just gonna ask him to record that. The, uh, voiceover artist who I hired to do this, Michael Beckett, he's just, he's fantastic, because he did one of my other audiobooks for me, and I was really happy with it, and, and he had the perfect boi- he had the perfect voice for that specific book. And when I was auditioning narrators for this book, I thought, "Well, I'll send an invitation to him. I don't know if he'll be quite right for this one, because it's totally different in terms of tone, and the character that he's doing is totally different in that book." And when I got his audition, I was like, "Wow, he's, he really nailed the voices," and I was really happy with it, so... That is how Michael got the job.
The streets were lined with parked vehicles, and the traffic came in steady, alternating streams. Cars, trucks, buses. He'd never seen the city quite like this before. And up until about fifteen minutes ago, the pulsing epicenter of the commotion had been the Derrick Theater, whose facade was illuminated by a bank of searchlights shining up on it from below. A mob of people had been waiting outside the theater, men in suits and hats, women in furs. There had been ticket takers at the doors, and young men parking cars, and a few shabby-looking kids hanging around. And there had been police officers watching the crowd. Nat had even seen one of the aforementioned shabby-looking kids caught while trying to reach into a theatergoer's pocket, only to be grabbed by a cop and pulled away by his ear. To where? The paddy wagon? Nat didn't know. But now, the doors of the Derrick were shut, and the only people in front of the theater were the usual pedestrians. Plus, a pair of city cops chatting with one another as they paced in front of the doors, looking for all the world like a couple of troops outside an army fort. "He is there right now," thought Nat. "Get the great Gideon Rust. The show's probably already started, and I'm missing it." "Even if Art does show up, I don't see how we're gonna get in," said Dick, whose voice was taking on an increasingly whiny quality with each passing minute. He had to talk around a white and red swirl peppermint in his mouth. He'd been carrying around a bag of them for the past few days, but was down to his last few. "I mean, it wasn't like this when we took a look the other day." "Course it wasn't," said Nat. "We knew it wouldn't be. It doesn't change the plan." A middle-aged woman carrying a paper shopping bag slowed down in front of Nat and Dick. Nat did his best to look uninteresting and stepped in front of his pack on the ground, the one he'd carried here all the way from Silvern Row, but had set on the sidewalk because it was so heavy, and subtly pushed it behind him a few inches. The woman did a double-take. She watched the two of them, two young boys just standing there alone on the busy sidewalk. For a moment, it looked as if she might say something, then she sniffed, seemed to decide the whole thing was none of her business, and kept walking. With his hands behind his back, Nat drummed his fingers against the stone of the cathedral and shifted his weight nervously from one foot to the other. "What time you got now?" he asked. "One minute after the last time you asked," Dick said. "Don't get lippy with me," said Nat. "Just because you're scared." "It's ten minutes after eight," said Dick. "And I'm not scared. I'm just tired of being asked what time it is." "Then give me your watch." "Get your own." Nat grumbled a word under his breath that he'd learned from an older kid at school. "I say we give him a couple more minutes then go, with or without him." "Okay," said Dick, looking at his watch again. "What do you mean by 'a couple,' though?" "Two. That's what a couple is." "Not always." "Yes, it is. Look it up in the dictionary." "People say a couple all the time when they mean more than two." "Well, when I say it, it always means two." "At eight-twelve, a couple of minutes from now, well..." Nat trailed off. His attention was drawn toward the sudden pat-pat-pat that anyone who, as a child or has ever been a child, can identify as the sound of another child's worn-down shoes smacking heavy-footed against the ground as they run.
Another little one that we have to change there. He just said, uh, "Anyone who as a child or has ever been a child," it's actually "is a child." So, we're at about the five... twenty-five mark. I mean, I said something about this the other day. I, I did not make Michael's job very easy, because there's some sentence, there's some sentences, see, I can't even talk right now. There's some sentences in this book that writing them down and seeing them in print is like, "Okay, I, it's no big deal." Like, it doesn't seem like that long of a sentence or too convoluted or anything. But then, when you actually have to read them out loud, it's like, "Oh, that's a little bit, that's a little choppy, that's a, that sentence is very long, it's not always clear what the inflection is supposed to be, so..." You know, like I said, I just didn't, I didn't make his job very easy.
"Anyone who, as a child or has ever been a child, can identify as the sound of another child's worn-down shoes smacking heavy-footed against the ground as they run." He turned toward the sound and saw a pair of shoppers parting just in time to make way for a rail-thin youth with wispy hair to come sprinting up the sidewalk. Panting, Art Hart came to a skidding halt in front of Nat and Dick. "Where on earth have you been?" demanded Dick. "We said quarter till eight." And although it could not have been a single minute since the last time he had checked his wristwatch, he consulted it again. "It's going on quarter past." "Sorry," said Art. "You could have gone in without me. I'd have caught up." "No," he tells us, said Dick. He bit down, cracking the peppermint sweet between his teeth. "The shop was busy," Art said. "Poppy wouldn't let me go until it had slowed down a bit, and it still hasn't slowed. I snuck out." He giggled and shook his head. "Boy, am I gonna catch hell for this." "Good man," said Nat. "All right, we're all here now, so let's go." Without waiting for a response from the others, without even waiting to see if they would follow, Nat hurried down the street toward the crosswalk.
All right, that's the end of chapter nineteen there. Oh, sorry, end of chapter eighteen. We're moving on to chapter nineteen now.
Chapter nineteen, Leightonia City, Pennsylvania, November nineteen eighty-two. "This place," thought Lou. "This frickin' place."
So now, we've jumped ahead in time from the thirties to the eighties, and we're in Lou McCulloch's perspective, who is the father of the main character. We were just in Nathaniel McCulloch's perspective when he's a ten-year-old in the nineteen thirties, so we're jumping forward a generation.
"Who needs one?" "Right here," said Lou. The can of Budweiser sailed through the dugout, and Lou caught it with an outstretched hand. The source of the lob, the ample-framed Eddie Tar, followed it up by tossing him the opener. Lou caught that, too, then neatly punched the top of the can. Then it was bottoms-up as Eddie, Bill Mail, and Deb McClintock watched. Out of the four of them, Lou was the only one who had left town for college. He was a sophomore now, and they were all quite impressed with how his drinking had progressed. He lowered the empty can and wiped his mouth. All the colleges in the area had let out for Thanksgiving break, which meant that everyone was in town for a few days. Naturally, there would be a big party tomorrow. Everyone would be there. As for tonight, one of Lou's old buddies had gotten ahold of him to tell him to come over to the football field, where a bunch of guys were getting together. Lou had been a three-sport athlete all through high school, and seeing the old football crew might have been nice, but had any of those guys tried to keep in touch with him since he'd left? Had any of them called him or returned his calls? Eddie, Bill, and Deb, on the other hand, they returned his calls, and called him once in a while, too, to see how he was holding up in the city. He would have rather spent a Friday night with any one of them over the whole football team. Especially Deb. She'd always shot him down in high school. But, well, it could have been his imagination, but she seemed to be looking at him differently now. The old baseball dugout wasn't glamorous, just a freestanding brick structure with a caged-in front that made one feel like a chicken in a coop. But, coopish as it might have been, it was just as good a place to sit and throw back a few as it was to take shelter in during a rain delay. Lou stared through the wire fence out onto the diamond. The dirt infield was even crummier than he remembered. At the university, they had a grass infield that got mowed before every game, and so far, his dad hadn't seen him play on it once. "I don't get it," said Lou. "Why are people so bent out of shape about this hospital thing?" "I guess I don't really know either," admitted Bill. "Never really heard the full story." "You see the signs yet?" asked Eddie. Lou nodded. "I saw a few as I rolled into town yesterday. The one in the front yard in Amity Court had been the first, but there were plenty of others. Not just posted in front yards, but hung in shop windows, taped to telephone poles, tacked to fences, and stuck to the bumpers of cars, signs and stickers that read 'Save Our Hospitals.'" "Do you not know the full story, Lou?" asked Deb. "Yeah, like, doesn't your old man talk about it?" said Eddie. "He and I haven't really talked much since I left for school," said Lou. "I mean, I know what's going on. It's people's reaction I don't understand." "He doesn't like to talk about it." "I'm not surprised," said Eddie. "People hate him." Bill nudged Eddie with his elbow. "What? I don't," Eddie clarified. "A lot of people also agree with your dad," said Deb. "Maybe even most people, but the ones who don't are being stirred up, and your dad's the scapegoat." Lou reclined on the bench and let the back of his head rest against the cool brick of the dugout wall. He was used to having his family's reputation precede him, but usually, it was in a good way. Until recently, Lou had never heard a bad word spoken about Nat McCulloch. It was always, "You're Nat's boy. Old Nat is one of the good ones," or, "Oh, you're Rose Stewart's kid. Didn't she marry little Nat McCulloch? A good guy, Nat." All the stories he'd ever heard about his father were the good kind. Stories like how when Nat was a boy, he would give his sack lunch to a child from one of the poor families, who sometimes showed up to school with nothing to eat. Never mind that the McCullochs were just as poor. The difference was, when there wasn't enough food in the McCulloch house, it was the parents who went hungry while the kids ate. Stories like how, after Nat's father, Lou's grandpa, had died young, Nat had gone to work to help support the family, tending the register at Poppy Hart's Music Emporium, and doing tune-ups and pumping gas at the local service station, and he never complained about it. Even when it stretched him thin during the school year and amounted to practically a full-time work schedule in the summer. There had been no sports or clubs for Nat McCulloch. His after-school activities had been providing for the family, which consisted of him, his mother, and his five sisters. That sort of workload wasn't technically legal for a minor to take on, but it had all been done under the table, and the family would have been bad off otherwise. Stories of how Nat had worked hard in school with the hopes of someday putting himself through college. How he'd gone to work at the Germania Oilwell Supply Company like his father before him when college had proven too expensive. And how, by saving up money on the side for years, he'd eventually scraped together enough to go to business school. After business school, Germania had rehired Nat, this time to keep their books. Somewhere in there, he'd enlisted in the Navy. Lou was a little fuzzy on the timeline, but he knew that after the Navy, Nat had been hired at the Leightonia National Bank. Lou also knew that it was through a connection at the bank that he'd eventually taken his position as director of the Leightonia City Chamber of Commerce. The chamber was one of many local organizations in which Nat McCulloch played a role. He was on so many boards and a member of so many committees that Lou had never been able to keep track of them all. But it was there, at the chamber, that the trouble had started. "Pass me another one," said Lou. Eddie did, and Lou punched it open and threw it back. When it was gone, he placed the empty on the dugout bench beside him and stared down at his feet. "Not a drop of alcohol has ever touched these lips," Nat McCulloch was known to boast. "Not once in my life." Yeah, the apple certainly had fallen a long way from the tree, that was for damn sure. Lou hadn't been a straight-A student. He suspected that he was capable of such a thing, maybe. But he'd always felt that the sort of hard work that studying required was best reserved for wind sprints, layup drills, and batting practice. He had also developed an interest in landscape paintings, but his father was about as interested in art as he was in sports. Growing up with a good family reputation, Lou thought, was in some ways even more impressive than living under a bad one. He sometimes envied a person like Mikey Schultz, because an anomaly from a ne'er-do-well brood was praised when he rose above the standard. But coming from good stock ensured that even minor childish infractions didn't go unnoticed. Boys like Lou were told things like, "I know you were brought up better than that," and, "What would your father say?" Still, Lou was just being impudent, and he knew it. When he thought of Angie over at Amity Court, he knew which option he would have preferred. The trouble was that he just felt so pinned in. Nat and Rose had always had a plan for him. He was their only son, and he was going to college. He would get a degree, and then he would get the kind of job that opened up the sorts of doors that had always been locked tight to kids like Nat and Rose.
If you're following along with the text, I mean, you'll probably have noticed that there are a few places where there's a word or two that's slightly different. Uh, this is not the sort of thing that I'm gonna have him go back and rerecord entire sections of the book, just so that, you know, a couple of my words are exactly what are said. Uh, I don't find that necessary, and I also think of it more as like, this is his interpretation, so there is, you know, to me, there's a little bit of leeway in whether the words are exactly the way I, I wrote them down. You know, if something changes my intended meaning, or, you know, there's a, there's a little bit of a, of a change in there, or a mistake that, that I'm not okay with, then, yeah, I'll have him go back and, and rerecord something, make a little revision. But, for the most part, if it's something minor, like one missing word, but the sentence still makes sense and it doesn't really change anything that much, I'm not gonna have him rerecord the whole thing. So, I mean, you'll notice here or there, small little things that are different, but in my mind, that is okay. I, I am a control freak, but I'm not that much of a control freak.
And he had been content to go along with this plan, so long as he could play sports while he did it. That was how he had come to begin a four-year bachelor's program in business administration at the University of Pittsburgh, where he'd managed to secure a walk-on spot on the baseball team his freshman year. By the third week in the season, he'd been starting at second base and batting cleanup, and maintaining a low B average. This semester, he was set to pass all his classes again without any issues. To Nat and Rose's knowledge, this academic arrangement would continue as planned, and they would keep believing that, as long as Lou managed to intercept a certain letter. He checked the mailbox that morning and again that afternoon, but it hadn't been there. "It all started civil enough," said Deb, pausing to open a can of her own. "Just some opinion pieces in the paper, then some town hall meetings, and then, I don't know, it got ugly." Lou sighed, thinking back to his mother's talk of harassing phone calls and threats at home. "The whole thing will blow over eventually," Bill said cheerfully. "I don't know," said Eddie. "My dad said every time he goes in for an appointment, the doctors are talking their patients' ears off about it, telling them how if the city hospital closes, the doctors will all lose their jobs, and the people will lose access to their health care and have to travel out of this county." "That is not true," said Deb. "Rumors like that are the problem. The doctors think they're going to lose their jobs, so they've turned it into a smear campaign to try to discredit Mr. McCulloch. And that Bauman woman is the worst of the lot. The things she writes, trying to rile people up. It's shameful." "I heard a rumor that Nat's taking bribes from some corporation in Pittsburgh slated to build the new place once the old hospitals close," said Eddie. Lou turned on him. "That's a damn lie." "I know, I know," Eddie said, hands raised defensively. "But that's what they're saying." "Eddie, that's probably enough," said Bill. "All I meant is that I heard it." "My dad isn't perfect," said Lou. "But making this town better is all he's ever cared about." "I sometimes think he cares more about that than he cares about me. He isn't taking any bribes, and anybody who says he is will answer to me." "You're gonna have to be careful this summer, then," said Eddie. "You think I'm afraid?" demanded Lou. "Nah, man, that's not it," said Eddie. "I just mean, well, you're gonna have to fight a lot of people if that's how you feel about it, and it probably wouldn't help your dad's case anyway. Did he say if he's gonna resign?" "Resign?" said Lou. "From the chamber?" "That's their latest thing," said Bill. "People are calling for him to resign as director." "Yep," Eddie chimed in. "Because of the scandal." "Eddie, cool it," said Bill. "Scandal?" said Lou. "Since when is it a scandal? He's done nothing wrong." "I don't know," said Eddie. "But a bunch of his owners signed a petition, and the ones that didn't sign, well, people are boycotting their stores now." "Eddie, for the last time, would you cram it already?" said Bill. "What?" Eddie protested. "He didn't know." "I know," said Bill. "But that's enough, okay?" Lou hauled back and pinched his empty. It rattled against the fence. "This-" "No." "I know," said Bill. "But that's enough, okay?"
Checking this line.
Lou hauled back and pinched his empty.
Yeah. Supposed to be pitched. His empty sounds like pinched. Uh... Can't have that.
It rattled against the fence. "This frickin' place," he thought again. "You know, I was always told to stay away from the McCullochs," Deb said playfully, breaking the silence. "Me too," Eddie cut in. "Because of the curse, because of what happened to old Grant and..." "Eddie, seriously," Bill said. "What? I can't say anything?" said Eddie. "No, not because of a stupid superstition," said Deb. "I was told to stay away from the McCulloch family because they were bad news." Lou grinned. "Really?" "Really," said Deb McClintock. "Something about a dispute over a fishing license? But even my dad knows that a bad word said against Nat McCulloch's character is a lie." Deb was sitting with her shoes together and her elbows in her lap, holding her Budweiser on top of her knees. Lou smiled at her. She smiled back at him.
So, uh, to give you an idea of what that reference is about, um, in one of the previous chapters, I didn't, I wasn't doing videos at that point, uh, so it's not in any of these review videos, but in one of the previous chapters, there is a dispute over a fishing license in which old Grant McCulloch, who they're referring to, uh, ends up dunking a fish and game warden into the water and holding him under because he asked him to see his fishing license. And, uh, And, uh, I will neither confirm nor deny this, but that may or may not be based on an actual McCullough, not McCulloch, McCullough family story. Possibly.
Chapter twenty. "Oh, son of a bitch," Lou said, plenty loud for it to be heard all the way on the parallel fairway. He had just watched his ball go slicing through the air like the off-kilter flight of a cheap boomerang, ending with a resounding crack as it struck an unseen tree trunk along the woodline. Lou stared for a moment, hopeful, but the ball did not bounce out. "Damn it," he swore again. He looked across the fairway. The November sky was cloudless and it was unseasonably warm. So warm that any golf enthusiast with the day off or otherwise had flocked to the nearest course to capitalize on it. And beneath that cloudless sky stood his father, a good deal closer to the green, with an iron propped over his shoulder as he waited for Lou. Nat McCulloch was a man of average height. He wore a fedora when he golfed to shield his eyes from the sun, in addition to the shaded horn-rimmed glasses that he always wore. These dark lenses had become quite fashionable. His shoulders had been strong and squared once, but now were rounded and a bit...
I feel like that's a fashion trend that I could get behind if it came back. The horn brim, horn-rimmed glasses that are like shaded dark. It's like, you see photos from people in the, like, the nineteen sixties? Maybe it's the fifties, but I think it's more the sixties. And a lot of them are wearing those sort of shaded horn-rimmed glasses. I don't know, I could maybe get behind that one if it ever came, came back. If that one made a comeback, yeah, I could see myself in that.
It slouched. He wore a blue button-up shirt and shorts and his legs were skinny and pale. His face was cleanly shaven and his hands were free of calluses. And at his midsection was a belly that one might have easily mistaken for a pillow stuffed under his shirt. It was, in not so many words, the quintessential white-collar body. He watched Lou for a moment and slowly shook his head. Lou could practically hear the disapproving sigh from here, which was about as close as his father got to obscenities. In fact, as far as Lou could remember, he had never heard the man swear in his entire life. Nat lined up his shot and took a slow, graceful swing. The path of his ball was like a rainbow. It landed in the center of the green, bounced, and stopped. Lou grumbled under his breath, slung his bag over his shoulder, and started walking toward the woodline. He knew he shouldn't have sworn so loudly like that, but it was a bad shot. What was he supposed to do? Be happy about it? It had been Rose's suggestion that the two McCulloch men take advantage of the day to share a round of golf. Doubtless, she intended the outing to be an icebreaker and to help reduce the stress constantly weighing on Nat as the result of the hospital situation, which was less a situation than it was a snowball that had careened downhill and grown in strength until it destroyed or knocked loose everything it touched, until the snowball itself was indistinguishable from the avalanche it had caused. Lou didn't know all the details, but he knew that trouble had been brewing since at least the nineteen sixties. The gist of things was that the two major medical centers in the area, a pair of hospitals in Leightonia City and Cornplanter, were both going broke. Some blamed the declining populations in the two cities. A direct result, Nat's father was always quick to point out, of the devastating loss of industry across the once highly productive oil region. He always, always used the word devastating when he referred to the loss of industry. It wasn't that the wells had gone dry. There was still oil in the ground. The problem was that it was less financially feasible to reach the reserves here than it was to reach them elsewhere. It was a numbers game, pure and simple. It had been cheaper for the locally grown oil giants to move their operations to places where one needn't drill so deep, so they had left. And the pumping of Pennsylvania crude out of the valley that changed the world had all but ceased. The once busy refineries and foundries and factories associated with that industry now sat empty. And the resulting loss of employment had spurred a mass population exodus from little towns like Leightonia City. By some estimates, within twenty years, half of all Leightonians had left for greener pastures. There was no enterprise that did not suffer as a result of the drop in population, including the healthcare industry. It hadn't taken long for the Leightonia City Medical Center and the Penswood Hospital in Cornplanter, each of which had been built to support much larger communities to feel the impact. Lou stopped beside the woodline, dropped a fresh ball at the approximate location where his first one had left the fairway, and pulled out his seven iron. Golf was the only sport Nat had ever shown any interest in, but Lou was of the mind that any sport that could be played by old men was hardly worth playing at all. Or maybe he was just too impatient to care to get any good at it. He lined up his shot, hauled back, and swung with all his might. He always swung with all his might. How else should a man swing? The ball did not sail nicely upward the way it was supposed to. Instead, it traveled like a bottle rocket fired horizontally. After about seventy-five yards, it hit the fairway, skipped hard, bounced, and rolled up to sit beside the green. One of his best shots all day. On the opposite side of the green, Nat sat on a small bench beside a wire wastepaper basket and a ball washing machine, waiting patiently. Lou slid his club back into his bag and headed toward his ball. Many potential solutions had been brainstormed in an attempt to solve the Seneca County healthcare crisis, two large hospitals both hemorrhaging cash. In the nineteen seventies, a division of labor deal had been struck between the two facilities. Instead of a full range of services offered at each hospital, certain services took place exclusively at one of the two. It was a less-than-ideal solution, but it was what the people got. The Penswood Hospital in Cornplanter lost its maternity department and cancer center. And Leightonia City Medical Center lost, among other things, a dedicated emergency ward. To many, the loss of the emergency ward had seemed outrageous, but a full-impact study had determined that Penswood Hospital was within sufficient proximity of the main population of Leightonia City, meaning that its location was suitable to service both communities. Nevertheless, the whole arrangement didn't sit right with a lot of people, including Nat G. McCulloch, whose father Grant had died in the back of an ambulance. He perhaps, more than anyone, knew the importance of having access to high-quality and prompt medical care. As the newly appointed Director of the Chamber of Commerce at the time, Nat McCulloch was a pillar of the community. Lou thought pillar of the community was a stupid term, but there it was. And it was no surprise when he accepted a chair on a newly formed board whose purpose was to facilitate the collaboration between Leightonia City Medical Center and Penswood Hospital. It was a surprise when Nat and a few of his contemporaries spearheaded and altogether new initiative, a proposal to replace the two outdated hospitals with a new state-
Just gonna listen to that sentence again.
It was a, when he accepted a chair on a newly formed board whose purpose was to facilitate the collaboration between Leightonia City Medical Center and Penswood Hospital. It was a surprise when Nat and a few of his contemporaries spearheaded and altogether new initiative, a proposal to replace the two outdated hospitals with a new state-of-the-art facility built in a more central location.
Okay, he changed, uh, a word there, but it didn't mess up the sentence at all. It just, it changed the sentence slightly. But I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't gonna be a problem. I'm okay with it.
This would provide easier, fairer access to healthcare, not just for residents of Leightonia City and Cornplanter, but for some of the smaller surrounding towns throughout the county as well. And that was where it had all gone wrong. The new initiative was quickly met with fierce and vocal opposition from a group that was as influential in the community as it was well-funded, the medical professionals who worked at the two hospitals. Keenly aware of the loss of jobs that would follow if such a merger took place, an inevitability in a county where jobs were disappearing for everybody, not just healthcare workers, this group felt threatened, and they started a movement of their own. The Save Our Hospitals Coalition was an initiative aimed to preserving the old medical centers. At first, they attempted to refute-
Make a note there. Twenty. Aimed to. Aimed to should be aimed at.
Refute the numbers, claiming that a new medical center would prove more expensive, Lishon was an initiative aimed to preserving the old medical centers. At first, they attempted to refute the numbers, claiming that a new medical center would prove more expensive for the county and detrimental to its citizens. But the data did not support their position. So when that didn't work, they targeted the individuals at the heart of the matter, first simply attempting to discredit them, then implying that the persons in question had something to gain personally from the arrangement. That they were lining their own pockets instead of doing what was in the residents' best interests. A daringly ironic premise. And there was perhaps no individual more at the heart of this matter than the Director of the Chamber of Commerce and the Chair of the Merger Committee, Nat McCulloch, who soon became the object of their ire. In a way, they could not have picked a more difficult target. Nat was well-liked, and his background was squeaky-clean. "Not a drop of alcohol has ever touched these lips, lest we forget." But things got nasty as time wore on, and the opposition found ways to make their claims stick. As it now stood-
I think if I were to go back and rewrite some things, uh, listening to this audiobook has, uh, I've definitely seen some places where I'm like, I wish I would have written that slightly different. I don't think I would have, I, I don't think the best thing to say there was "lest we forget." I really should have changed that to something like "lest anyone forget." Um, "lest we forget" doesn't fit the perspective that we're, that we have there. I'm gonna make a note of that for myself. In case I ever want to go back and make any changes. Like I said, control freak.
But it looked like the initiative for the hospital merger and the construction of a new medical facility would indeed pass. But the Save Our Hospitals Coalition hadn't given up yet. They were still fighting, and they were fighting dirty. Misinformation, rumors about bribes from big Pittsburgh corporations, boycotts of area businesses, harassing phone calls, and words like scandal printed in the newspaper by staff writers like May Baumann, who discriminating readers might have done well to note was married to one Dr. Baumann of Cornplanter. Things had gotten so bad that the Chief of the Leightonia City Police Department had urged Nat to stay far away from any more town hall meetings, as authorities had reason to believe that his life might be in danger. The petition calling for Nat to resign from the Chamber had been news to Lou. He'd wanted to ask him about that today, but so far, it just hadn't seemed like the right time. His father seemed upset with him. He always seemed upset with him. It was like there was a veil between them. Nat had the gift of gab. He was a social butterfly right at home in the middle of a conversation, but Lou had not inherited that gift. This, in addition to their personal differences, made Lou one of the few people with whom Nat did not easily converse. Lou had always found this idea difficult to accept. Lou stepped up to his ball and pulled his nine iron from his bag. All the while, Nat watched him from the bench, arms crossed, waiting for his son to catch up with him. "I hate golf," thought Lou, and swung hard.
So there we go, end of chapter twenty. Um, one of the, I haven't heard it from that many people, but, uh, from a few people, some of the criticisms that I got on this book is that there are sections that are, uh, slow. And, you know, maybe that I, uh, tell instead of show a little too much for some of these sections, and I think that's valid, and I definitely can see that in these last few chapters, there's, uh, some long sections where it's just, I'm just telling this, I'm just telling you what happened, I'm just telling you here, and there's a, you know, I, I try to stick that in the middle of a narrative of something going on, you know, it's like, the whole chapter is not just me telling you things happening, you know, it's, it's Lou and Nat, uh, golfing. And these things are going on kind of in Lou's head as he's golfing. Now, I know the advice is show, don't tell, so some people would say, you really should have found a way to work all of that into maybe a, a dialogue between two characters, so that you're not just listing events and, and writing things as they're happening. And I agree with that to an extent, but how boring of a conversation would that be? I just find sometimes when, uh, the old, sorry, I'm gonna switch scenes here. Uh, I just find sometimes the advice on show, don't tell. I understand where that advice is coming from, and I think it's, I think it's good advice, but I think that it is taken too strongly to heart sometimes, where there's some information that, you know, you can just tell it, just tell it. If somebody doesn't like it, they'll skip through it, I guess, but like, if I tried to put all of that information into a conversation between two people, like, as a reader, I would be skipping through that conversation because that would just be boring. So I think that's where I'm gonna stop for now. Got through three more chapters, and, uh, yeah. I got, I think I'm a little, yeah, I guess I'm about, uh, just over halfway through the book. And so hopefully pretty soon I'll be able to get through all of these chapters and I'll be able to make the audiobook available. You know, it's kind of fun to not just do the work and let you see what I'm doing, but it's also kind of fun to do, you know, I think I described it in one of my captions as, it's almost like I'm doing a little DVD commentary here as I'm going through the book, you know, I'm giving a little bit of inside information into some of these stories or, uh, how I wrote certain things. Um, one extra thing that I don't think I've ever really told anybody is that this entire book, uh, I wrote the whole thing longhand. I, the first draft of it, I did not type a word. It was on a couple of legal pads. So I just had, uh, yellow legal pads that I just, actually, I think they were white legal pads, who cares? But it was legal pads. I wrote the whole thing longhand, just, you know, page after page after page. And then part of my, uh, revision process in creating the next draft was in typing, uh, my handwritten words into the word processor, like into a Word document, because initially it only existed on a couple of legal pads, which, that was a first for me, and I really enjoyed it. I thought it was a really cool process to do it that way, and it totally changed the way I wrote. Because the way that, you know, a word processor is with a computer is like, you can, okay, type, 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 and then like, I don't like that sentence, I'll just highlight it and, you know, mass delete, and I'll just revise that and I'll change it, and then, oh, I don't like that. And when you're writing on a piece of paper, you don't have that luxury. So I found myself writing more slowly, uh, thinking out what I was gonna write first out of necessity. And then also, if something wasn't exactly perfect, you know, I had the option of either, okay, erasing entire lines, wearing down my eraser, messing up the paper, making it look real nasty, or I'm, I'm, cause I crossed it off, I guess. But when you have either that option or just going, ah, it's okay, I'll fix it later, and you just keep going, that actually is really valuable for keeping you working. Because it made me just go, okay, it's not perfect, but it's okay, and I just kept writing. And that's the thing about a first draft is like, you can't fix what doesn't exist. It's okay if it's imperfect, but you have to actually write it. So, uh, yeah, that's a little bit of information about this book that I don't think I've ever shared anywhere, that the entire thing was written longhand on some legal pads before it ever was put on a computer. So I will, uh, continue to do these videos, and, uh, in the meantime, if you would like to like this video, subscribe to my YouTube channel, follow me on any of the social media stuff, or if you would really be kind to me, uh, check out one of my books and see if you enjoy it. I would really appreciate it. Anyway, uh, in, 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 in any way that you'd like, I would love to hear from you and see what you think, so. Thanks for watching, and, uh, happy reading and writing.